And we will start our meeting in the customary fashion with a pledge of allegiance. So please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our agenda, are there any changes, Mr. Diamond?
And I think I was on mute when I said that. So if the people that are watching remotely can turn off their cameras so that the only people whose cameras are on are the board members and the two applicants for the board position. Thank you.
Okay, and I would also add for the folks in the room and joining remote, please bear with us. The meeting format is a little bit of a make it up as you go with some of the hybrid stuff we have to do here, so no changes to the agenda. So I would look for a motion to approve it as you see it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond seconded by Rick to approve our agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Agenda is approved. Okay, that brings us to the next portion of our agenda, which are the board vacancy candidate interviews. By way of review, of course, we have a vacancy that we were made, we made aware to the public and solicited interested folks, gave them about a week of time to communicate with us their interest in that. We had two folks that did that, forwarded to us a letter indicating their interest. And we at tonight's meeting are going to visit with both of those and have a set of questions we'll have them answer. And ultimately, the board by majority vote will select our seventh board member to fill the vacant seat. That, just to clarify, it's a one-year term or a position that would last until the next election. I think I was under the misinformation, or maybe I repeated it to someone, that the person's term that is vacated has two years remaining. However, by statute, we are electing or appointing someone, I should say, to fill that until the next election cycle, and that person will then have to run for that seat again. So just so folks are clear on that process. So I would take a couple of minutes or a little bit here just to welcome the two folks that joined us. We have Jennifer Johns and Dave Holtermann, who are the candidates that had thrown their hat and the proverbial ring here, if we will. So I am going to, before I do the, I have four questions, and before I start on those, I would give each of you oh, a moment or two, or whatever, whatever you want to take, and just introduce yourself and give a little bit of your background, maybe. And then, once you've each had a chance to do that, we'll go ahead with the questions. So, in a shovel, once can I go ahead?
Just ask both Dave and Jennifer to remember to unmute your screen when you talk. If you're, if you're not certain how to do that, we can help you out with that, too. Did you get it?
Okay, so as I started to say, in a shovel, with manner here, I would let ladies go first. So Jennifer, if you wanted to say hello and tell us a little about yourself.
Thanks for taking the time to learn a little bit more about me. I was born and raised in Rock County, and I served for many years. My spouse is a deputy sheriff, so we are currently sheriff's department, and we have two children. Our daughter is a freshman here at high school, and our son is in seventh grade at the hospital. I'm a graduate from UW Whitewater, and a master's degree from UW La Crosse in Student Affairs. And both of those two guys are students, and a non-graduate student. We're working well while being full-time employed, and the mother to very small children. I currently work at M.C. as the director of community development and the holders of Mercy Foundation. I've been in a leadership role within that organization for the past eight years, and I truly enjoy the work as a professional fundraiser, and the community advocate really for that hospital and the organization as a whole. Prior to my work at the hospital, I was the director of UW Rock County Foundation, and I was in that role for more than five years. And I fired my role in career in fundraising. I served as treasurer treasurer for the town hall, which is one of the testing section through the district. And I actually learned a lot about lending, mill rates and such, so I feel very proud of that, too, again. Now, I guess that's kind of me in the nutshell.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Jennifer. And second, we'll hear from Mr. Holtermann.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Dave Holterman. I most recently ran for this seat in the recent election and came in third. Little background on myself, I am a 1993 graduate of Milton. I went, or my wife and I have three children. I have a fourth grader at Northside. I have a junior at the high school, and my oldest is a sophomore, UW Whitewater. Again, a little bit about myself, I'm a 1993 graduate of Milton High School. Went to UW Whitewater and earned a degree in finance in 1997. Completed the Rock County Leadership Development Academy in 2006, and graduated from the Graduate School of Banking at UW Madison last year. Some volunteer experience I've had leading up to this, I am the chair of the Government Relations Council at Forward Janesville. I'm a board member of the Blackhawk Technical College Foundation, a member of the Janesville Morning Rotary Club, also a volunteer with the Show Choir Parents, assistant coach with Milton Youth Football for my son, and a frequent speaker at the financial literacy course at the high school with Mr. Minogue. On my career, since 2015, I've been vice president of First Community Bank in Milton. My role there has me work with business clients. I'm also on the bank's board of directors and a variety of committees within the bank as well. Again, why am I running? I've got a lot of years invested in, in the community. My wife and I love it here. Our kids have gotten good educations while here, and I think now is a good time for me to leverage some other experience that I have and hopefully be an asset to the, the board here at the Milton School District.
Okay, thanks, Dave. So we'll alternate who goes first. There's four questions, so we'll just do a little back and forth. The, the first one has just a touch of redundancy, so please forgive that when we put the questions together. It overlaps a little of what you just told us, but please feel free to expound on any of that.
Joel, this is Carrie Clubbey. I'm sorry to interrupt, but Jen is not actually visible. I think her iPad shut down. So for the interview process, can you guys please turn it back on?
Okay.
Thank you.
I was not aware of that one. No, no, that's fine. We need to know that kind of stuff. Is that better, Carrie? Can you see her?
No, she's still not there.
Yes, she is. She's here. I can tell you she is. Carrie cannot. Is that better?
I'm sorry, she's still not showing up on the screen. Is anyone willing to share their laptops so she can do this interview?
Can we share a laptop and overcome our little challenge here?
There she is.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're gonna use a borrowed laptop here. So once again, please forgive our technological challenges here. We'll muddle through as best we can. So as I said, we'll start with the first question here and don't, the redundancy notwithstanding, please feel free to repeat or tell us whatever fits your, your answer to the question the best. And I will certainly repeat it if you want me to, or I'll reread it for the second person to respond if they want. So it says, "Please tell us why you are interested in serving on the school board. What strengths, talents, and abilities will you bring to our district? Describe your personal involvement with education, school functions, and extracurricular activities in our community." And I will start with Jennifer, I guess, if she wants to go first. I just, I had a left and right on my sheet here on my, so.
That's all right. So I believe I bring extensive experience to the board based on my past careers and volunteer experiences. I've worked through, again, like I mentioned, mill rates and shared revenue and tax levies during my time at the township. I've been part of a leadership team at UW Rock County in both kind of solid and shaky economic times. And of course, my work at Mercy Health has given me perspective of the needs to think big picture and long-term for a large enough organization such as the hospital. So my volunteerism on a variety of community boards that I serve, and the list is long, just like Dave, obviously, actually, we serve on the Government Relations Committee together. And so I have spent thousands of hours in working together on boards. So I currently serve on the Rotary Botanical Gardens Board, the Leadership Development Academy for Rock County, the Women's Fund, the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin, the Janesville Multicultural Teaching Scholarship Committee. I currently serve as a board member of the Janesville Country Club. So again, lots and lots of community involvement. And I think working on those boards has given me, again, enough experience to help make a lot of nonprofits in our area more successful within the community. And I've been part of many of those great organizations and have held a leadership role in almost every single one of those boards. I want to serve on the school district board because I love education. And I believe as a group, if we concentrate on putting our students first and work together, we can make the district one of the best in the states. I am fairly new to the district as a parent, and I have been nothing but 100% impressed with everything the district has done for my daughter, for our family, for the community. I enjoy being part of a positive organization, and I believe that this district is just that. So that's, that's truly, I guess, my real passion. And then the vast majority of my adult life, I have either reported to a board of directors or of course have been a board member. And I think this experience serves me well, and I believe that I've been through and seen what it takes to be successful.
Okay, thank you. Dave, would you like me to reread the question at all?
Sure.
Okay. So for Dave, I'll reread it. "Please tell us why you are interested in serving on the school board. What strengths, talents, and abilities will you bring to our district? Describe your personal involvement with education, school functions, and extracurricular activities in our community."
Okay. Well, first of all, I grew up here. It's obviously grew here. So the reason for my interest is really the district has given me a lot to be in my family, and I hope to be able to repay that, if you will, some strengths that I have. I think my role as a man, you know, as those people and folks who.
Did you hear that question? Dave, could you unmute yourself? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I think Carrie did it remotely.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, shall I start over? You are welcome to if you'd like, yes. Okay. So again, why am I running or interested in this board position? Again, I grew up here. My wife and kids, obviously, are here, and I feel over the years that the district has done a lot for myself and my family, and I feel like this is an opportunity to get back. Strengths that I think I bring to the table is having the, the perspective of seeing, you know, things here since the 1980s and how things have evolved and changed. I think that coupled with my experience at First Community Bank here in Milton in town, I have the opportunity to get the feel for the vibe and the pulse of the community, both in the business and with folks in their concerns of finances in general. Experience that I have, again, at the bank, I have an extensive experience in the world of finance. Additionally, serve on the board of directors there and a number of organizations that I shared with you, kind of in my intro. So while I would be new to this board, wouldn't be new to being on a board and boards that share similar missions to what's going on here at school. Personal involvement, been very involved over the years, trying to be involved with, obviously, community groups, again, such as Forward Janesville, Rotary Club, Blackhawk Tech Foundation, but also stuff that my kids do. So Milton Youth Football, serve as an assistant coach, a volunteer with the Milton Show Choir Parents Group. If you've all been to The Rock, The Rock ever, it's a long day. It's about 20 hours of volunteering in a single day, but it's a good day. And then with the personal finance class here with Mr. Minogue and a quarter or semester speaker to talk about establishing credit and things like that as well. So what I think I bring to the board is, I think, my career experience, experience in other boards, and just kind of background in the community, I hope would be an asset to this board. And I appreciate the opportunity to chat about it tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, our second question, and then I'll stay with Dave because we're gonna flip-flop who goes first. So for Dave and Jennifer, second, "Do you feel the school board is effectively prioritizing our needs and action plans? And how would your experience help to improve this process?"
Okay. I think as I entered into the realm of tossing my hat into the ring, you know, as I kind of assess the things at a high level strategically, if you will, that the board should be focused on or is focused on in my mind. I think first and foremost, the academic progress of students is, I mean, that's why we're all here, not only as a school board, but as a community at large. To do that, maintaining quality facilities is paramount. We need to retain the talent within the district at all levels. And ultimately, as we look to the future, maintaining a responsible fiscal outlook. And so as you balance these things, sometimes things conflict amongst those priorities. And so I think overall, we've generally done a good job. I mean, if you look at the mill rate comparatively to other districts in Southern Wisconsin, if you look at ECT and other types of testing comparative to other districts in Southern Wisconsin, I think we, we regularly rank at the top or very close to the top. So I think, I think we've done very good, and a great debt is owed to the folks that have served in this capacity in the past. You know, as I look to the future, it's maintaining those things, I think, especially with, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic going on now. How do we balance all these things with, you know, shifting ability of the state that's yet to be determined? And then just local collections of tax and things, you know, how do we continue to maintain and students that are excelling relative to their peers, maintaining quality facilities relative to our peers? It's gonna be much more challenging, I think, than any of us saw six months ago, but, you know, we can do good things now, and we'll continue to do good things. And, you know, those, I guess, are my priorities and hope, you know, to take the reality as it is and find a way to help us move forward.
Okay, very good. I'll repeat it for Jennifer. "Do you feel the school board is effectively prioritizing our needs and action plans? And how would your experiences help to improve this process?"
Well, the quick answer is yes. I definitely think the board is moving in the right direction. I'm, again, been very impressed with the five strategic objectives that you obviously have planned out, and your goals are realistic, and they're measured. Those are the key elements to making a strategic plan successful. And I have had a great deal of experience, especially in the eight years that I've been at health system, to be part of strategic planning. And I do bring a vast experience as it relates to making sure that goals are realistic, making sure that they're measurable. And I think that I would definitely bring value to the group. But as it relates to your current progress, the, the objectives make sense to me. And, and again, I think you've learned from mistakes, and the transparency is amazing. Again, it's, it's very clear that the group as a whole has learned along the way, and the things that you have done moving forward are very impressive to me.
Okay. Excellent. We will stay with Jennifer as she can go first on question three. "What do you feel are the top three challenges facing our district?"
So maybe not in any particular order, but the construction project certainly is on everyone's mind, and I think both, not only within the schools themselves, but also the community. So I think that's, again, one of the big, the biggest challenges is to make sure that all of that project and process is communicated, not only with, again, the actual school buildings and how the students would function during construction, but also then what is it that we're telling the community? And I think the continued health and safety of our students and staff will be critical in the months ahead, just to make sure appropriate measures are taken to comply with the requirements and also to keep everyone safe. So that's something unique that obviously no one really had thought about, but I do think it's a challenge ahead. And then I would argue that technology is, it still needs to be invested, invested in keeping our students and staff current and provide accessibility to allow to everyone to continue to be educated. I think that the district has done an amazing job with technology, and as technology continues to change and evolve, and I definitely think that we need to be, we need to keep ahead of what maybe is coming next, and I think that's always a challenge.
Okay, thank you. And for Dave, I'll reread it quickly. "What do you feel are the top three challenges facing our district?"
I think in the short term, opening back up in the traditional sense, I, I can tell you from trying to act as a quasi-in-person educator to my kids, the opportunity of getting our kids in front of their actual teachers in the same room is of paramount importance. And so how do we do that safely in a manner in which we're respecting the health of the students and the staff and everyone else that they come into contact to? But getting that done as soon as it's safe to do and with a well-thought-out plan is gonna be paramount. I think looking beyond that, also related to what's going on now is, you know, we've got an operational referendum coming up. We've got probably a lot of question marks as it relates to state aid and crafting a budget for, for the short term is gonna be very, very difficult. And so, you know, feedback at the state level, if the CARES Act provides additional dollars to the state to funnel down to districts and things is gonna be a big challenge. And then using that data to decide what an operational referendum looks like in 2021 is gonna be of paramount importance, too. And, and all of these things flow back into how do we maintain and strengthen student performance? Again, if we didn't have tons of respect for teachers leading up to this, we certainly do now in what they provide to our students in a face-to-face environment. And so how do we take these challenges, which are hopefully short-term, and continue to strengthen what our, what our students are achieving in the long term is gonna be, I think summarize the top three challenges that we're facing right now?
Okay, thanks, Dave. And we will stay with Dave for our last question. "Where do you see the school district of Milton in five years?"
Well, I, I think one of the things that we're gonna see is, you know, this area of the state is gonna continue to grow. You know, there's a lot of challenges in more rural areas up north, but, you know, as you look at Madison, Milwaukee, Chicago, that triangle of, of economic area, you're gonna continue to see growth. And so the plan for us, or the, where will we be in five years, is how do we plan for the type of growth that we'll see? How we predict what it's going to look like? What are the staffing needs, the facility needs, and other resources that we'll need to consider as we prepare for that growth? I sincerely believe this is a place that people are going to want to continue to be and raise their kids. And so, you know, if you look at when I graduated, I think my graduating class was 150 approximately, and now it's 280, somewhere in there. So, you know, as we project that line forward, how do we deliver what we're delivering now in a as-good-or-better fashion five years from now is going to be the challenge that we all face? And so, again, anticipating growth, planning for growth, and laying the framework for success with that growth, I think, is, is where I see ourselves as a, as a growing district, both in taxable value and number of students and all the other metrics that you see. So I see us five years from today, bigger, hopefully stronger, and prepared to tackle the future.
Okay, excellent. And for Jennifer, "Where do you see the school district of Milton in five years?"
So I definitely would reiterate with Dave about growth. I do think, obviously, the district will continue to grow. And I also see the district collaborating more. I think collaboration is really important for a community this size. And I think that, again, there's opportunity to collaborate with other organizations within the community and also, again, to build on programs and services that may be a duplication even within our region, not necessarily just in, in the district. So I, I would like to see some collaboration. I also see in five years, the district's going to be, it's gonna be a sought-after place to go to school, and it's gonna be a sought-after place to work. I think, again, the recruitment of teachers in this district, again, based on my own personal experience so far, I've been extremely impressed. And I also, in five years, we're gonna be known to have state-of-the-art facilities. Again, I, I just think that we're gonna continue to invest in, in our facilities, which will ultimately, again, I guess ultimately add to that growth.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to both of you. Certainly not easy to come in and talk off the cuff about some of the things in the district that, that you aren't sure what we're gonna be asking questions on, et cetera. So I was impressed with both of you, and thank you much for your, for your candid response to some of the questions. So the next segment here is discussion and action to fill our board seat. So just by way of procedure for my fellow board members, now would be the time that you can offer any kind of discussion if you choose to. And ultimately, the action is not a nomination, but it will be a motion to appoint candidate X to fill the vacant board seat, which would take a second and a majority vote to accomplish. So with that, I would open the floor for any of the board to share their thoughts.
Well, I guess I'll share my thoughts. I always have an opinion, right? I thought both of you are very good candidates and you had some very, very good answers. And both of you are stellar candidates. So this is going to be a pretty tough decision, I think, as we move forward. But I at least wanted to give you my opinion as to that. And then I'll just let my other colleagues feel free to comment.
Well, I also think two excellent candidates. It's a good problem to have, have nice qualified people who are interested. So thank you both for coming. I think the difference for me would be the fact that, I know nothing against you, Jennifer, but I know Dave's been coming to board meetings. He's been, I think he's probably more in tune with the issues and what we've been talking about. But I also think the fact that he finished a close third in the recent election has to count for something. That's my, that's my opinion, I guess. Not that we have to listen to the electorate, but I think that's kind of one of the things that really sways me, so.
Finding the time to come to the different committee meetings, have you thought about that? With your schedules, the way they are and things like that?
Can we respond?
I think we can do this however we choose to, so yes.
Okay. Jennifer, would you like to go first or?
Right ahead.
Okay. Well, it's a very valid question and a question that I considered a lot before being here. The first step in that journey, if you will, was talking to my wife. And we sat down and talked about it and, you know, talked about, you know, kids' activities, things that we do and things like that. And so we kind of had that discussion, specific as it is to like board packages and things like that. I found I do a lot of my best thinking after the, you know, after the kids call it a day. I'll spend time in the evening and later evenings reviewing board packets. Kind of having those thoughts where I have the ability to do my job, my ability to be interacting with my family and those things. And then that last hour, hour and a half of kind of myself time, I can either read a book or depending on the timing of these things, review agendas and take notes and things like that. So that's kind of the plan that's worked in the past and how I anticipated going forward. But it's a good question and something that definitely takes a lot of thought kind of before throwing your hat in the ring for this.
So I would make sure that this is my priority. Most of the other board positions that I serve on currently are once a month. So again, not a huge time commitment. And also they're usually during the course of my workday. So much different. And I am an early riser. So I do a lot of board prep work before the sun comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else on the board?
I would just like to reiterate that you both seem like very highly qualified candidates and really quality people. It speaks really highly of Milton as a community that we have people such as you that are willing to step up and serve on the board. So I'd like to thank you both for your interest. I would also like to reiterate a little bit of what Rick said. As someone who just went through the rigors of running for school board, I don't think you realize how much is involved in running for the position until you actually do it. And so I know Dave, the rigor that you went through in the last few months running for that. And I do think that that should be taken into account. But I also want to say, Jennifer, that that does not in any way negate your qualifications and the quality person that you seem to be from the way you answered the questions. So thank you to both of you.
I guess I'm the last person to speak and everyone's pretty much said what I would say. So I'll echo that of everyone else on the board. I think we're very lucky to have two really solid candidates. I'd rather see two solid candidates than seven highly unqualified candidates. So it's a very good feeling knowing that we have people that are great options, interested in being part of the board. And what I would say is only one person's going to get it tonight. However, there is a lot of positions open next year. So I hope that the outcome of tonight doesn't, would encourage whichever one doesn't get it to run for school board when there's openings in the future. So I think that the school district of Milton would be lucky to have both of you at some time serving on the board. But with that, since I'm the last one to talk, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Dave Holtermann to fill the vacant seat as a member of the school district of Milton Board of Education.
A second.
Okay, thank you. As you heard, a motion from Diamond seconded by Shelley to appoint Dave Holtermann to fill our vacant board seat. Any other discussion on that motion? If there is none, I will roll call voted. And you're voting yes or no on the motion, as I just stated, not, you're not saying a person's name. So we'll just go clockwise around the room. I will start with Shelley.
Yes.
Is it yes, Diamond?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Is it a yes? Brian?
No.
Is it no? And Joe is a yes. That is by my tally, five to one. Simple majority is what we need here. So with that, I will call the motion passed in favor of Dave Holtermann to fill the vacant board seat. With that, I would also offer my thanks to both of you. I'm terribly impressed with the quality of your answers and of yourselves personally. Please take to heart what we said about staying invested, staying involved. And we would certainly love to see you again. So once again, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to bid us well if you choose. Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you. Procedurally, then we go to the oath of office. For Mr. Dave.
Yep. I, David Holtermann, have been elected to the Office of Board of Education for the school district of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. I do.
And?
Thank you for your answer.
That is all there is to it. Thank you. And formal welcome to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
All right. On with our agenda, which pulls in at action on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond seconded by Rick to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. And action on the vouchers is next. You have that list with you?
I will make a motion to approve Fund 10 vouchers totaling $825,424.91 and Building Fund 49 vouchers totaling $170,006.91 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond seconded by Rick to approve our vouchers as she just indicated for those amounts. Is there any discussion on the vouchers?
I have a question. I think this would be for Carrie. There seem to be a lot of amounts that come up over and over and over again. Like, and I'm just wondering if those are like refunds for certain things that didn't happen because of not being in school?
There was a lot of refunds on this set of vouchers because the checks were signed with Mike Pierce. So we had to issue a lot of refunds and reissue. I know that was a lot of the reasons why you saw a lot of refunds on this set of vouchers. It's not from what reading or looking at board vouchers in the past is not as normal. But this one, there was?
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of them.
So is that, I guess that's my question. Is that what all these are? Like the 10, there's 1050 over and over and over and over. There's like 3303 over and over and over and over. Is that what those?
Carrie Bradley, do you want to go ahead and answer that?
Sure. A lot of those are refunds where we collected money from students and then an activity was canceled. And so then we had to refund what we had collected from the students for that activity.
Thanks, Carrie. That's what I suspected. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, any other question on the vouchers? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The vouchers are approved. Public participation, there was a dual opportunity to do so tonight. Kim indicated that no one signed up remotely. And we also have no one that signed up in person. So unless I see or hear differently, we will move past public participation. And brings us up to superintendent update with Mr. Diamond, if he is ready to go.
Yeah, just, we've put this on as a standing agenda item so that the board can be updated on any new news regarding our virtual learning or the school closures. And there's just a couple of things that have come up since the last time we met that I want to give the board a quick update on. Last Friday, we did get a message from the Department of Health Services in a webinar that was, that included nearly all of the district administrators from across the state. And they at that time recommended that there not be any large in-person gatherings through the entire summer. And they strongly recommended that districts go ahead and plan a virtual graduation ceremony of some type. So we've moved forward with that. That's an agenda item that's coming up later in the agenda. But that was the common message that districts across the state heard from the Department of Health Services and the state. There's been continued discussion about funding for school districts for next year. And it's becoming more and more clear that the state is facing a significant revenue shortfall. There is some hope that the federal government will provide some stimulus to states. But without knowing that for sure, we are, as we're budgeting for next year, looking at multiple scenarios. We've talked earlier about the expectation initially was that we would get an additional $300 per student. And that still remains the best-case scenario. But it is looking that that is more and more unlikely that we would get that entire amount. And it's becoming more likely that some reduction in that planned $300 per student or even possibly none of that money or a reduction. So we are, as we're budgeting, keeping that in mind. And we've had some of that discussion with the board. But as we get more information from the state, it's looking like the state's budget shortfall is more and more real. And we're continuing to make plans for summer school. Through the month of June, through the end of June, we'll be doing a virtual summer school. We are still developing multiple scenario planning for summer school for July and August, what that would look like if we cannot bring students back, what it would look like if we could bring small groups of students back or what it would look like if we could bring larger groups of students back. So as we get more information on that, we'll bring that to the board. Unless there are any questions, that was my update for today.
Any questions for Rich? Okay, we will move on to our standing agenda item called referendum. Letter A is update from Mike Huffman, sitting behind and to my left. So welcome, Mike, and tell us what you got.
Okay, great. Can you see and hear me? Okay, great. So for the new board member, Mike Huffman, the owner's representative, representing the district with the construction projects, I give a report typically every board meeting. However, once a month, I provide a written report that goes in the board packet. And this is not that meeting. So this is the report light, so to speak. However, we've got quite a bit to talk about and some good news I'm happy to share here with you today. Typically, I spend some time on the actual construction progress. I'm going to be brief with that because I talked about that quite a bit at the last report. I can just tell you that the elementary schools have moved along quite nicely. The brickwork is now completed over east. Basically, the structure at all of the elementary schools is well underway and complete on several of them. The exciting thing is that we've gotten started with the middle school. So you, if you've been by there, you've seen a backhoe out in back. The middle school now has a big hole in the back where there used to be a playground. So that is underway. What I want to spend some time talking about today is the bid process for our latest and last bid package. So this is the last big dollar piece of the puzzle for the Milton referendum projects. Certainly, there are some financial pieces of the puzzle that are still to be put in place out there. But those are smaller things and they're on the soft cost side of the job rather than the hard construction cost side of the job. So for instance, we still have to finalize our technology purchases, get all of our furniture ordered, things like that. But this last bit of construction bidding really was the last bit of hold your breath for, in waiting to make sure that we came out consistent with the project estimates. So some information in your board packet by way of memo is information on that bidding with respect to the high school. So we started out, well, for quite some time, our budget for the high school portion of the referendum projects has been $36,581,640. When we opened bids in late April, we were presented with some good news. We were roughly $600,000, $700,000 under that budget number based on the base bid of work that we put out. Now, this is a big portion of work, of course, at $36 million. So there was a lot of work to be done to make sure that all of those bids were accurate. And we had some interesting outliers. We had one contractor that had 28 exclusions that were in there for the work that we required. So who appeared to be the low bid when we opened the bids. After discovering all those exclusions and talking to them and saying, hey, you got to have these in here, they wound up not being the low bidder. So there's a little bit of that back and forth throughout the process. But largely, those numbers hold. And so when all of that evaluation was done, we wound up at about $565,000 under the project budget. So that's a good spot to be in. Now, we knew that we had taken some, as I've called them in the past to this board, pressure relief valves or scopes of work that we could identify as alternates. Just in case, we didn't have a good bid day and we wouldn't take those. So end result is we were $565,000 under when the bids were evaluated and the number, that number was presented. We also asked contractors to give us voluntary value engineering features that we could evaluate. Now, I, I've explained this in the past, value engineering, uh, is done in multiple steps. We do it in the design process. The designers put down on paper what they hear from the client that they want to, to have. We go through it as, as a group of professionals and we try to, uh, deliver the same thing for less cost. So that's a very good part of any project is to challenge the initial design and get to a very good design. Uh, meeting all your needs, all the scope, uh, at, at somewhat lower cost. So that was done. Then we have the process where you get all these experts for their particular piece of the project that can come in and say, I know waterproofing better than anybody because I put waterproofing out there. So what, what are the aspects of waterproofing that could be done slightly different? They'll offer those up. We'll take it back to our design team. We'll review it as a construction and design team and say, no, thank you. Uh, we, we don't want that or yes, absolutely. That might've been a, a, an error in the drawings or that's a different way of doing it. We've evaluated it. We like that. So there was a tremendous list of that that we reviewed. And the end result of that was that we found $377,000 worth of good, what we value, we deemed good quality value engineering pieces. Um, and so that puts us in a position, uh, with the base work of, of being $944,000 under that, uh, original budget number. Now, of course, we had identified several things as, as those alternates or pressure relief. Uh, and so now we can start to buy some of those back. So also listed in your, uh, your memo uh, are the types of things, uh, that we are promoting to buy back through that, that savings. Um, we added an elevator in the, uh, STEM addition. Um, Stephen's going to talk a little bit more about that, uh, so I won't dive into that too much. Um, we had, uh, some renovation in the student services area that we, we identified as something that we'd really like to have, but could do without if, if, uh, bid day wasn't positive. It was positive, so we'd like to put it in. We have a, uh, addition uh, for the receiving dock for the kitchen, uh, where there is an ability to expand the weight room above it. Uh, we'd like to, uh, put that back in. Uh, there's some toilet renovations, cameras out on the site, uh, really all of those things that we had identified, uh, for the high school, uh, we have the ability to put back in. If, uh, we do that, um, then we wind up $154,196 under that budget for the high school. So that is what's proposed to you, uh, in your board packet that you authorize, uh, Superintendent Domon uh, to proceed, uh, on a guaranteed maximum price for the high school with JP Cullen, uh, for that resulting number. Which is in here somewhere. Uh, $36,427,445. And again, that's $154,000 under the budget. Now, if you will recall, when we had the, uh, bid day for the middle school, we had a good day, wasn't a fabulous bid day. Uh, and so some of those, one in particular, uh, alternate that we would like to have worked into the project, we weren't able to work into the project at that time. We now feel that, uh, due to the good bid day we had on the high school, that you've got an opportunity to go and revisit that alternate. And this was uh, not the, in the new construction of the middle school, but it was in the renovations, uh, in a, a central part uh, where we were going to renovate, uh, four classrooms. Um, and that, uh, came with a cost of If you were to do that, that would take you over the original budget for the middle school by $128,000. Uh, and of course that would be offset by the underage uh, of the bids on the high school. So I think I will, um, I will pause at that point and see if you have any questions on, uh, the overall number and, uh, the bidding process.
One item I'll hop in here real quick about is the funding mechanism for the, uh, STEM elevator. Uh, if you guys will recall back in February, when we went for the capital ma- approval of the capital maintenance and improvement plan for, uh, the fiscal year 2020, 21, that, uh, we had the STEM, uh, the STEM elevator as part of that to be funded by the, by our operational budget. At the time of our project development, uh, the need was determined to have an elevator in that STEM addition, STEM additions due to the sheer distance between the elevator that we would have and that far point of the STEM addition. And, uh, because this really wasn't part of the original referendum scope, if you will, we decided it was, uh, necessary enough, uh, for us to, uh, try to carry it through the operational budget. Uh, due to the desire to have that elevator in the initial construction, that was the, the plan that we chose to have just due to the sheer importance of it. Uh, due to the positive bid results, as Mike outlined, we're, uh, going to recommend that we move that elevator's funding mechanism from being uh, 2020, 21 fund 10 expense to, uh, an opera, to a referendum, uh, budget expense to alleviate the burden, uh, on next year's budget. And, uh, that really ties into what Rich had mentioned in the superintendent update about the funding uncertainty at the state level, that this would provide approximately a $210,000, uh, relief to fund 10 for next year. Uh, due to the ability of the referendum budget and the high school bid results being able to absorb that. So that's just the second piece of that puzzle. Another, another piece of good news, if you will, uh, to go along with, uh, the high school and middle school projects as a whole.
Stephen, that's a human elevator or not afraid elevator? So that would maybe ADA, right?
Yeah, that's a human elevator. It's a 3,500 pound standard size, uh, good elevator. Uh, it's important to do it.
That would have been a requirement otherwise for ADA?
It wasn't required by code to have one down there because we'll still, we would have still had one on the other side of the building. But it, I think when we did the calculation for, if you have a student in like a science, science class in the new STEM addition, they would have had to travel some 600 feet to go all the way to the elevator and back, which was not a feasible task for passing periods.
Steve, by decommissioning the existing elevator, does that create a different distance issue depending on where you're starting from? Or is, uh, is the layout so improved that that somehow is mitigated?
So the existing elevator being decommissioned, uh, wouldn't affect it at all. There's going to be a new elevator, uh, that's going to be provided at what will be the new event entrance.
Okay.
So the new event entrance is, you know, just to the south of the existing pool. So it would be, you know, two elevators kind of on each side of the building for optimal flow.
Okay.
Mike, I had a, in the email or the memo I sent you about, um, the number of local bids versus out of area bands or non-union bids versus union bids. Can you enlighten that or do you?
Yeah, yeah. I, I do want to back up and talk, uh, and make sure everybody's aware of, uh, how the bidding process, uh, uh, transpires. Um, and this is similar to the elementary school and the middle school. Uh, so we, we have a bid day, uh, the, the bid documents are out on the street uh, at a minimum three weeks. I think we were out on the street a little bit longer, uh, with the high school bids. So those get advertised, uh, uh, on, on, in bid houses, uh, in newspapers. Um, and we, uh, go out and try to drum up some interest in the project. We've done that with, uh, uh, having pre-bidders conferences. Uh, we have pre-bidders tours. Uh, we make direct contact, um, where we can. Um, the fortunate thing is the third time you go about this with the Middleton, Middleton, Milton referendum projects, uh, people are aware of it. And, and having bid on the first two, they've got on their calendar when the, the, the last one is coming out. So, uh, good exposure uh, for the bid process. Then as, as you're aware, uh, scopes of work for which JP Cullen was interested in being a bidder on, all those scopes of work were bid to my company. Um, and we did not share, uh, and JP Cullen had to bid, uh, to, to my company as well. Uh, we didn't share those results until we had a, a, a vetted number. Um, and then as, as far as the local participation, um, part of that is the direct marketing, if you will, of the project. So to get in the, uh, the local papers, uh, making people aware of it, um, uh, somewhat, uh, you know, when you, you have a, a $60 million project, um, uh, sometimes contractors will look at that and say, well, that's, that's out of my league. The scope of work that I'm participating in uh, is, is too big and that would exclude, uh, a lot of contractors. We had the ability, uh, and, and it was mostly through timing to break it up into the, the three bid packages that you've been aware of. That allowed, uh, some participation in the elementary school projects or the, or the middle school project that might not have been able to participate had we lumped it all together as a single bid package. So now we get to the high school project and it, it, it is a bigger job. And we saw that some of the smaller contractors that did participate in the first two bid packages didn't participate in the third bigger one, just because, uh, their, their plate of work was full, or they looked at it and said, it's, uh, it's a bigger scope than what I have the staffing and ability to take on. Um, with respect to, uh, the union involvement, um, that's a part of our, uh, promoting of the job. Um, I personally have had conversations with Andy Jorgensen of the, the union, trying to get the word out there. He's done a good job of, uh, communicating with, uh, uh, firms with, uh, are a part of their union. And I think the, the word got out there very, very well. Um, that's the, uh, proactive side of getting people to the table for the bid. Once we receive the bids, um, we, we, we have, uh, been very, very clear that, uh, the low bid number is the number that we're going to work with unless we find some deficiency. Uh, either in that firm or in the number that they presented. And so as I said to you, when, uh, when we looked at a specific contractor on the high school side, they had 28 exclusions in the job. Uh, that swung the pendulum financially to the, to the next bidder. Uh, there also had been bidders that we looked at and, and just said, um, we don't think uh, that they have the, uh, ability, uh, to do our job. We don't have confidence in their financial situation, uh, and we don't have confidence in their ability to provide the quality work. So there has been a case where we have, uh, not included, uh, one such bidder. Didn't happen to be the low, happened to be the second low in that particular category. But the vast majority of the bids, it is the low number. There's looking at it to make sure it's a complete and comprehensive and qualified bid. And then that is who we, we proceed with.
So you said you see this bids that colored are involved in bidding, which they don't see. Do you see the bids they take on the other projects? Do you have involvement in that?
Yes. Yes, there is a, uh, there's an advertised bid date. Um, and we have a, um, uh, bid conference. Now, before COVID-19, it was a go sit in the war room together, uh, as bids come in. And they would come in in various forms through the, through the mail. They would come in hand delivered. They would come in over the fax, uh, and they immediately get opened and into a spreadsheet. And it's, uh, it's kind of like a sporting event. You, uh, it's like a horse race, if you will. You uh, go along and you say, oh my gosh, we're $200,000 over budget for this particular line item. Not looking so good. Whoop, here comes one $300,000 lower. Celebrate. It, uh, it, it's a, it's kind of a fun event for construction geeks, I guess.
Taking place in the draft, I can see this.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, uh, we participate in that process. Steve Claven from my office, uh, was there when it was, uh, an in-person activity. Uh, and then, uh, then we went to, uh, uh, Microsoft Teams, uh, video conference with it where we could see on the screen and watch it as the bids came in.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? I think you, most of you have surmised, we have melded A, B, and C on the agenda all into the same discussion. Um, that, uh, they had touched on, on all points, uh, relative to, uh, the, the two action items that we have, of course, um, we'll tackle separately. But, uh, are there any questions with what Mike, what Stephen has shared on either of the kind of topics of the moment or even elementary, anything?
Uh, I, I have, uh, one question for Mike. Um, so and forgive me if you've said this in the past and enumerated these in the past, but, um, as far as the accepting the several value engineering suggestions, can you just summarize, uh, what, what those accepted suggestions were?
Yeah.
Unless there's 50 of them, then maybe just hit the big ones.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, there is 50 of them or more. Um, and if I could just, uh, a brief explanation on the value engineering. This, this is a piece that, uh, often is understood and, and people are often, uh, can be critical of. What do you mean after you got the bids, you went through a value engineering process? So it's important to note that, uh, that value engineering process happens only with the bidder that is already the low bidder. We don't go out to the bottom three bidders in a category and say, give us your VE ideas and then let that influence who gets the bid. We only do this with the, the low bidder after the low bidder has been identified as a qualified bid. Okay? So to give you some examples, um, and there, they range from not so exciting things where we converted from uh, round tube steel to square tube steel and save some money. Um, we changed the roof of the gym addition to a galvalume roof. It was a, I won't say a custom color before, but it was a, a, a color and we decided that it's such a flat pitched roof, uh, at that a- almost no vantage point. Can you actually see it? And galvalume seemed, uh, to be fine and acceptable. I think it was about $20,000 uh, in, in that particular category. Um, there was a big one, uh, electrically. We had, uh, a fixture that got repeated over and over and over and over again throughout the high school. We made a change to that one fixture. Uh, well, we had changed to multiple fixtures, but it, uh, it wasn't a great number of models, uh, but we saved $85,000 on that particular VE item. Uh, we also looked at electrical and did a, a very, very common, uh, change, uh, electrical designers like to design every wall down to the outlet, uh, in electrical conduit. So it's an open pipe for which you pull your wires to and then connect your electrical device to it. Um, the reason that it's a pipe is if you decide later, I have to pull that wire out and pull some different wire in, you can do that. However, you can go to what's called an MC cable, which is a flexible cable that already has the wires in it. And it's a lot easier. They don't have to bend the pipe, uh, and, and find spaces to run it. You just snake it into the wall, get it to where you want, want it to go. And it's much easier from a labor standpoint. Uh, we, we said, you don't want to give up the ability to pull main branch circuits. So we only use MC cable in its final distribution to an outlet per se. So there's lots of back and forth. Uh, that's another good example. We eliminated the weed barrier underneath the hardwood mulch.
Another fascinating one is always changing a ceiling tile that looks identical to another ceiling tile and it saves you 50 grand. I mean, that's stuff that always is good to find out, so.
Yep, exactly. We changed the type of one pump to another type, saved $12,000. We, there's a whole bunch of them that were offered that we rejected. We looked at a thinner walled piping for some of our HVAC work and decided not to do that, stayed with your original bid. Changed to permanent wheelchair spaces in lieu of recoverable spaces in the bleachers, save $1,500. I'll give you just a couple more here. As Stephen said, $25,000 on a different type of ceiling tile. Use a high-performance grout in lieu of a urethane grout on our bathroom tile. We were comfortable with that. Here's one for the cocktail party. We changed the benches in the pool area from Brazilian teak to aluminum. So those are the kinds of things we've done.
One thing I found in the memo that I think bears repeating or pointing out is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the two early work packages that we are actually started at the high school are included in the actual monies that you're telling us that we're going to approve tonight. So it's not an on top of, those numbers are inclusive in this $36 million number?
Yeah, that's correct. So in the end, you will wind up with three guaranteed maximum prices. Yes, elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Gotcha.
So if you approve the alternate, the middle school will alter the GMP. If you approve this amount for the high school, it includes those first two bid packages that you've already approved.
Yeah, I wanted to point that out.
Excuse me, first one bid package they already approved.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign the notice for JP Cullen to proceed into the construction phase of the high school referendum project.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Rick to authorize Rich to sign the notice for JP to proceed into construction of the high school project. And you've heard this detail on the dollars and the scopes of work, et cetera. Are there any other questions relative to that phase of our project? Hearing none, I will roll call vote that one. I'll start with myself, and Joe is a yes. And I will go counterclockwise to Brian.
Yes.
And to Mike.
Yes.
And to Rick.
Yes.
And to Diamond.
Yes.
And to Shelley. Okay. And I'll pause just a quick thing here. I did mention to both candidates in the explanation I gave to them for the process tonight that we would certainly understand an abstention in voting on particular matters that they might not have the background that they choose to. So when I get to Dave, if he abstains, I offer that to him or whatever, or he certainly has the rights and privilege to vote if he so chooses. So forward over to David, and what do you think?
I followed the project close enough that I'm comfortable with the progress and excited to see things moving forward. I don't have any reservation of voting yes.
And that would be 7-0 to approve that motion. So thank you very much for that. And I think that segues naturally to what they're proposing to us for an amendment to the GMP for the middle school.
I'll make a motion to adjust the contract amount with JP Cullen for the middle school referendum construction project to $7,165,239.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Mike to amend our middle school contract, as you just heard. Is there any discussion on that particular project? Seeing none, I'll roll call vote that one also. And I don't think it's harmful to go back to the source. We'll go around the clock and we'll start with Dave.
I'll go yes.
Is it yes? And Shelley?
Yes.
And Diamond?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And Joe is a yes. That is also 7-0. We will pass that motion unanimously. Thank you very much. And I believe that completes what you had to offer for your update, Stephen. So thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Hoffman. You're always very, very insightful and helpful on how that whole process falls together. So thanks much. And thanks for bringing us good news. Under is always good.
Yeah, right.
Okay, rolling on to committee reports. We just have the one, the human resource committee, and I will let Diamond start that summation.
Well, the first up on our discussion tonight is summer school staffing. Sarah Stuckey has been actively working on getting teachers lined up for that. As we all know, it's virtual to start until the end of June 30th. So that's definitely playing a part into summer school that we weren't anticipating or expecting. And it's kind of been a work in progress, and they're working incredibly hard on that. Chris, do we have updated numbers with where we're at on staffing those teachers?
We do not, not at this time.
So we're still working through it. As Rich kind of alluded to in the beginning of the meeting tonight under his update, they're looking at those options, ideally hoping that we can do some in-person virtual summer school come July and August. But we're all at the mercy of what the governor allows us to do. So we just continue to be flexible and take those updates as we can and try to provide the best program we can for our students and support our staff to get us there. Rich, would you like to add anything to that or does that do a good summation?
I think that was spot on. And there is still some uncertainty as to what summer school will look like. But I would echo what Diamond said about the hard work that people have been putting in planning. What normally is a very involved planning process is doubled or tripled during these times because of the uncertainty. So everybody's been doing a great job with that.
And I think we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. But just to reiterate, a lot of the planning going into summer school doesn't happen right now. It happens in the fall. As soon as one summer school session's over, they start planning for the next one. So a lot of that work is getting reworked. So the work that they're doing is incredible right now. So thank you to those staff members who have been a part of that. So then we will move on to item B, discussion and possible action on the 2020-2021 support staffing baseline. So this is again very similar to what we've looked at before. Something new that we've been putting together here in the HR department. And so it's what we're hoping or we're recommending for our staffing baseline, mimicked of what we did the prior year. So very similar to what we're doing. We're just kind of bringing this through to every part of our staffing needs. Something that we can refer back to when we need to make changes and that we edit and bring to the board. Any questions on that? Very similar to the last board meeting. Chris, did I sum that up very well?
Absolutely, Diamond.
Chris, I just have a quick question. I noticed there are two avid tutors there. I thought they were extending avid to eighth grade, too. Are they not going to have tutors in eighth grade?
That's actually not known at this time.
Okay.
We would talk with Ryan Ruggles about what that looks like. And if that was that need, those avid tutors would be brought before the board because that would be in addition to what we've already planned.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we need an action on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 support staffing baseline as presented. Any additional positions not listed in this baseline will be subject to Board Policy 4111 and brought forward to the board for review and possible approval.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Shelley, as you just heard, to approve our support staff staffing baseline for 2020-2021. Any other questions on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes clearly. Okay, new business. Item four, letter A, is discussion and possible action on 2020-2021 CISA District Number Two contract. And Susan, are you joining us?
I am here. Can you hear me okay?
I believe we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
This is the CISA II annual review and approval, hopefully. CISA stands for Cooperative Educational Service Agency. And the school district of Milton is in CISA II. There are 12 CISA's in the state of Wisconsin, and CISA II covers 74 different school districts. A CISA is all about kind of an liaison between school districts and the Department of Public Instruction and the U.S. Department of Education. Most of the items on this pertain to special education, which is why I tend to give this report, although we are now contracting with CISA II for Jedi services. And I believe Tara Huber will be providing more information on that sometime in early June. All the items on this list are optional with the exception of the administration $3,752 fee. That is an annual fee for us to be part of CISA II, and that is a requirement. I'll talk a little bit about each of the items. And if you want more information, I'd be more than happy to provide that for you. The first two items called Assistive Tech Academy and Assistive Technology Library is about technology used for students with disabilities. And it tends to be our most involved students who need technology to communicate. So the academy allows our staff, we usually send two or three staff members to these meetings that happen a couple of times a year where they get to explore different technology that is new. It changes every time they go, and we like to be able to stay on top of that. The Assistive Technology Library allows us to borrow items because we want to try them before we would purchase them for any students. And so far, we've borrowed 81 items. If we would have purchased them, that would have cost us $11,000. Dialogue with an attorney. CISA II contracts with several attorneys to come and speak to directors of special ed about different legal issues. For instance, just talking about COVID-19, there are different requirements for students with disabilities than there are for children that are typically developing. So staying on top of the paperwork that needs to be done, what timelines are waived or have some flexibility, that's all part of that. The other piece that's with that dialogue with an attorney is that if we would have a unique situation in the district, I actually have a couple of phone calls that I can make that fall under that umbrella. The reason that educational audiology is emboldened is because that is student-specific. Right now, we have 11 students who are receiving support who have hearing aids or FM systems. And that number will go up or down depending upon which students register next year in the fall. Resource Library, Professional Resource Library. This is a library that has educational materials. And there are units that our teachers with, that work with students with disabilities only need those materials one time a year. If you'll notice, I noted that in March, we borrowed 43 items. Those are items that are used just once for a couple of times. If we would have purchased all the items that we have borrowed so far this year, that would have been a total of over $37,000. So it's a pretty good, pretty good deal for us. Effective practice has to do with coaching. So in the past three to five years, we have contracted with CISA II to bring people into the district to coach our special ed and regular ed teachers who are co-teaching, having somebody come in and be able to do an observation and provide some nice, specific feedback. The TAN is all about transition services. In the state of Wisconsin, our students with disabilities need to have a transition goal in their IEP at the age of 14. And this organization allows, again, we rotate people to these meetings. And this allows us to explore different options for those students because we are, we want to make sure we find a way to help them transition to the environment of Milton, this safe school district, to what does college look like, what might tech look like, what does a job look like? The van delivery is exactly that. It delivers things to our district from CISA II. All those things that we borrow, they drop them off here. And then that last item on there is our tentative cost right now for the Jedi Virtual School. And as I mentioned, Tara will speak to that, I believe, in early June. Do you have any questions for me on the CISA II contract? I can't hear you.
You're muted there, so.
I thought it was my hearing aid.
That's right. I wasn't muted before. I just wondered about the number of the 20 kids taking the Jedi program. Are those at-risk kids or are the kids are short of credits at the high school or suspended kids?
I think Jeremy would probably be able to answer that. Is he still in the room?
He is. Yeah, some of them are students who are at risk. Some of them are students who they are doing an alternative program, but not necessarily at risk. They're doing, some of the Jedi students are more successful taking those online classes. We have some that next year who will be taking Jedi classes that are AP courses that they're able to fit into their schedule that way.
I helped someone with Jedi last year. It's way harder than what kids and people think it is. It's time and consuming and involved.
Susan, quick question. The contract, then, it would be all those items. And if I calculate that correctly, it's like $46,000 and some change for the year. How is that compared to our contract from last year? Is it about the same, a little bit more, a little less?
Yeah, it's interesting because usually I do that comparison for you. And I started to do it this year. It's, you know, certain items are a little bit higher and certain items are a little bit less. The audiology, we have no control over. The effective practice, we have spent more than that on our co-teaching. But because of COVID, we haven't used all of our hours this year. And so they are going to carry those over, so I cut those hours back a little bit. But for the most part, it stays pretty consistent. They do change their services periodically, and they offer a lot more. And I would envision that we would use them more because they have the time to research some of the things that they're offering.
So if I understand you right, then it's about the same as what we spent last year? I mean, obviously, it's going to fluctuate. It's not going to be the same, especially with that audiology part, but it's about the same.
About the same or just a wee bit higher?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Susan? Otherwise, this is an action item for us to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 CISA II contract as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Mike to approve our CISA II contract for next year. All those in favor, are there any other questions? I'm sorry. And hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion clearly passes. Thank you, Ms. Susan. B, we will bring in Mr. Billhorn, discussion and possible action on 2020 graduation ceremony plan.
All right. Well, thank you. I know this is an item that has been long coming, and a lot of graduates and their parents are eager to hear what's going to be happening with the ceremony. You know, I appreciate the patience of the, I wanted to mention the graduates and their parents with regards to this because this has been one of the more ever-changing criteria for what we can do with looking at Wisconsin safer at home and then looking better bounce back. But as Rich alluded to earlier, the guidance that he received is that throughout the state that they are discouraging or they do not want us to have large in-person events. And this did a lot of graduation specifically, and the guidance in that, encouraging a virtual ceremony. So that's what we're going to be doing. We will be holding a virtual ceremony. It's going to stream live. It will start at 2 o'clock on Sunday, June 7th, which would have been the regular time that we would have had our ceremony. The, we'll be recording the speeches of the students and Mr. Diamond's welcome and then my address to the students. And then we'll be having a presentation of the diplomas virtually as well. We're working that out and that's the big, big part of this too, is how are we going to be doing the presentation of diplomas? And we're actually giving students three options to work, to get their diplomas. One is we're going to be, students have the option of having the diploma mailed home. They can cap and gown and take a picture and send it to us. And then when we do the virtual ceremony, we'll utilize that picture for the presentation of diploma. We'll also have the option where we can deliver it to their home and we'll take a picture with our photographer. Person taking pictures that will be able to utilize in the ceremony as well. The third option is the one that we've been, been working on and working both with the Rock County Department of Health as well as EMC Insurance. We are going to have the opportunity for students, each graduate would be have the option of having an individualized appointment where they'll come to the high school. And we'll have the graduation stage set, the parents, parents only. And the graduate will be able to come into the, we're going to do the Performing Arts Center. The graduate will walk across the stage, we'll have someone in the booth that announces their name to walk across the stage where we take that picture again that'll have on, on our graduation stage. They'll be able to utilize that in the virtual ceremony as well. We're taking a lot of precautions in regards to that. We would be scheduling individual students for individual times to be there. And very, very, the only staff in there would be our person taking the picture. We will have a staff member who is going to be placing a diploma on the, a stand and then wiping things down with afterwards, making sure that we are following the process with regards to the social distancing. In talking to EMC, they're very pleased with that. In talking with Rock County Health, they're very pleased with that. In fact, I'm getting, EMC is actually having other principals, I've got two phone calls today from other administrators that are wanting to know how we're doing that plan just because they, they're pleased with the safeguards that we've put into place. So we would start doing that, actually, the week after Memorial Day, we would start with the diploma presentations. So it's been, like you said, it's been kind of a journey getting to this point of what is going to be allowed and not be allowed. But what is usually the best, and it still will be the best day of the year, I feel, at Milton High School is graduation Sunday. We're looking forward to trying to provide the best opportunity for our graduates and families this year with this given and taking into account, you know, trying to do our part to be as safe as possible as well. Mr. Diamond, presenting.
I think that Jeremy hit on the big points there. Jeremy and his staff at the high school have put an incredible amount of time in planning graduation and making sure that we have an opportunity to celebrate our senior class of 2020 and celebrate the 100th graduating class from Milton High School. But also ensure that we're doing it in a safe manner that gets the stamp of approval from our Rock County Public Health, from our local law enforcement, from our insurance company and from our legal folks. So hats off to Jeremy and the team there for the work that they've done to prepare.
Yeah, I would just like to extend a word of appreciation because Jeremy's job is pretty large and encompassing as it is and this has certainly been an extra thing on your plate. And I, I think you've offered students really good options and given the situation, I think you've made the most of it. And I do think it will be a day of celebration, which it should be. So thank you for all your time and effort.
Thank you, Mike, we have a really good team working on this, a lot of really good people wanting to make the best for the students, but thank you.
Okay, my apologies, so I'm back on. So my question is, and what I've been asked by some folks is if we do our virtual ceremony just the way you've lined out or outlined to us, would that be it? Or is there a plan to do a follow-up ceremony, gathering, et cetera, to the extent we're allowed to later in the summer?
Part of the communication I'm going to put forth after this is we put forth where the plan is to the graduates, the family, is that when allowed, we'd like to be able to have what I'm going to dub as the zero-year reunion for the class of 2020, we bring them together. And at whatever point that it's going to be, we, and right now, we just do not know. But that would be a chance for closure where students can be at school, it can be, you know, you can walk the halls. I mean, sometimes they want to get pictures of their favorite spot. It's, nothing would have that closure that you get at the end of your senior year. We would allow, we would do for that, we would allow a chance for them to be there, whether it's a tailgate and whatnot. We, that, that still needs to be planned out, partly it's what time of the year is that going to happen? We're not exactly sure. But it would not necess, the details, we'd still have to figure out, but at least would be something for the graduates to come together. And we have planned that out enough ahead of time because one of the things about having something later in the summer is we have graduates that go every which direction mid-June. You know, we have some that are going in the military, some who are moving, some who are traveling. We have some who have even, you know, learning remotely, some have moved already. And so we want to make sure we have enough time for them to, to plan for that so they can be there. But it's also one of the, one of, one of the reasons on top of not being allowed to meet in the summer, why we wanted to have something, wanted to actually have the commencement ceremony on June 7th.
Yeah, I just, I've been privy to some of the discussions that culminated in this plan and I wanted to extend my congratulations and thanks to the team and, and whatnot. It's an extremely challenging environment and as you heard from, from Rick as a parent, I think folks are appreciative of that. We all know that high school graduation is a hugely emotional milestone for families and students, et cetera. So to do something less than they were planning and hoping is, is always hard. And hats off to, to the way that we've tackled this situation. And I was really proud to hear that we are becoming a bit of a benchmark or something to aspire to if other folks are, are going to try and emulate what we think we're going to try and do. So congrats on that. Any other questions for Mr. Billhorn?
Jeremy, is there anything that we can do as board members to help? Usually we're there being supportive on that day and we don't get to do that. Is there anything we can add or be a part of to try to help make it a special moment for our students?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Tom. Yeah, we, I appreciate that. As we are working on, we have to be very mindful as far as actual location, the dispersment of the diplomas, of how many people we have on site. So that probably would not be a good drive to that. Certainly, when we have that celebration in the fall, the board will be invited to be at that. And we are still working on the itinerary of what the commencement is going to be. We're working on the storyboard and do a Tim Hall, hats off to Tim Hall. And some of his student team is going to be a part of putting this together. We're still storyboarding what that's, what the actual commencement ceremony is going to be.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Billhorn? There is a motion at the end of that, we need to take action here for him to proceed, so.
I move to approve the recommended 2020 graduation ceremony plan as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion from Mike, seconded by Diamond, to approve our 2020 graduation ceremony. Questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? That is approved, thank you, Mr. Billhorn, and best wishes on that endeavor. And you are still on cue for travel requests.
You know, it seems a little bit strange talking about travel requests right now when we're canceling everything. However, next year is a travel year for the choir. So we're doing this now every four years. And it's scheduled to be at the end of March, this is our spring break next year. So I'm bringing forth the extended travel, they would like to start to do some of that more planning and having students sign up. They've been, they've been fundraising already for the trip, not knowing exactly where that is going to be because they have an opportunity to fundraise prior to that. But they'll start in earnest starting this, this, this next year. So the trip that they're proposing is going to a show choir competition in Los Angeles. I'll be honest, when Eric Minitz and Amison, when the two directors came to me and I said, well, going all the way to California, they're able to find some really pretty incredible deals right now. So the trip itself is actually going to be $1,400, which is actually less than what they went to New York at the last trip. They also took a survey of the families and of the students and of the families that responded. This was still the most popular trip and that's actually with the cost being at $1,600. So I, I said, we would take it forward to the board for approval. One of the, the conditions, however, is that as we start to put money down and work with the agency that's putting together the trip, that everything is refundable, not knowing what travel necessarily is going to be like. And I sure hope we can do traveling by next spring break.
I'll make a motion to approve the Milton High School extended travel request as presented.
Hello. The school districts are subject to, can you hear me? I think I'm muted. Are subject to a membership audit on their September and their January counts. And it's chosen in a variety of methods, you can, they do some random drawings of districts. If you have an anomaly in your past membership audit, you automatically are scheduled, scheduled for an audit the next year or no less than three years apart. So it's been three years since our last membership audit, so we were up this year. And we hired Johnson Black, who do our financial audits, to do the membership audit as well. And the audit findings are in your packet and they were all clear with two exceptions. And those are back in the attachments. The first one is you have to reconcile your September count to your January count. So all the kids that counted in September, who left, who came? And so you come up with your pluses and minuses and you come up with a number of kids in January. So you reconcile the two accounts. The high school was off by one student. And I want to stress the amount of time that Joanne Jenner does the high school count, count. And she spent a lot of time going through this, didn't she, Jeremy? A lot, I did as well. Marcy Berger, I'd help me several staff looked at this ad nauseam and we could not find it. It's kind of like the Bermuda Triangle. I don't know, we don't know where this difference is, but we looked high and low. I challenged the auditor, I said, you come up with this difference and I'll buy you dinner. And she could not come up with it either. So it's just, but she said, I have to list it on the report because it, it reconciled, it did not reconcile. So that was the one there for the high school. And the other issue was there was a full-time equivalency error in the summer school report and they brought that to Sarah Stuckey's attention and she corrected it right away, but it still has to be on the report. So it's likely, probably, we will have an audit next year again, but we'll, we'll, we'll come through just.
So Kim, with that audit, since we were off by one, I know like a lot of our, especially it was like a enrollment student, there might be some financial implications. Is this one of those situations where it was kind of benign, so there's no payment back or anything like that?
Right, actually, let me, let me go back to the reconciliation versus the count that we give to the DPI. We are, we are very confident that our count in September and our count in January was, was correct. Because Joanne went through student by student from September to January, all 1,100. I think it might be some sort of an odd glitch, it may be Skyward when they, you know, the numbers come out of the Skyward system. I'm not sure, but we are confident that the count that we gave them in September and January is correct. Those were, the number likes to divide by two.
So just to make sure I understand, like, if we did find that, yeah, we definitely had a mistake that we could find, would we have to have any payback to the DPI or, or state aid or anything like that or?
No, we, if, if they did find, if we did find an error in the count, not in the reconciliation, because that doesn't, that isn't the funding. But if, if there was an error in the count, then you go and amend your report to DPI. But that's where I was saying, we're, we're confident that the count is right, but we couldn't reconcile the high, just the high school.
You need to unmute, please?
My apologies, I will start over. Committee assignments and WASB and building reps are my job, obviously. I'm about 90% done with that, I wanted to hold off pushing it out until we seated our seventh board member tonight. So having done that, I've got a couple of slots to fill in a little bit with that and we'll publish the, the committee assignments with folks and, and it'll be very similar to what we've had in the past, not moving folks around an awful lot, so. Look for that, I hope I can get it out tomorrow morning if I'm on top of that.
Joe, one thing I'd like to add on that is just we, we have some guidelines for the building reps on things that they can be doing in their buildings, I'll send that out to the board members tomorrow too.
Okay.
So we will move on to the calendar. And that is included, obviously, in your board packet there for your information. That has all of our meetings, date and time. You'll notice that the regular board meetings start with our fiscal year. Or what we previously had scheduled was through July, so this starts August 10th. Those first two are asterisked because we will try to hold our meetings at the district or at the high school library like we had been. With the caveat being that we're going to stay out of Stevens Way when they're doing any kind of construction work, et cetera, up there. And hopefully would coincide with when the students are able to be back in the building, so would we. So in the interim, we will meet here at district office and presumably the PDC here so that we can spread out and do what we need to there. So the dates and times are there, but try and remember that we'll follow the students. When they can go back to the high school, we probably will too. Is what, is what the thought is. So any questions on that? Okay, bump down to miscellaneous, the staffing report that you have in your board packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Thank you, motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, to approve the staffing report that you see there. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of that, approving that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, the staffing report is approved. Gifts and donations are next and that list is $10,022.99.
I'll make a motion to accept the gifts and donations with gratitude. And I also just wanted to send out a special shout-out to the Consolidated Parents Group. I'm the Consolidated Building Rep and their very generous donation has been, they've been working on that for quite a long time and that money is going to be put towards a new sign at the school. So just wanted to give them a special thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's a motion, seconded by Brian.
It's a motion, seconded by Brian, to approve our gifts and donations, uh, with our continual thanks to our generous community. All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates. Mr. Domins, what are you aware of? If there's nothing urgent, we'll get these committees, uh, published and then at our next meeting, we can, um...
Yeah, once we have those committee assignments, we'll send out a, a few to the committee members about upcoming dates.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me just, uh, note that we had a special meeting scheduled for the Tuesday after Memorial Day and that was because, um, this time of year, open enrollment usually ends at the end of April and we have to make our decision, I think you have to make your board decision at the end of May for, before the first week of June. Now they've bumped back that open enrollment period to the end of May, so we don't need that meeting, uh, for open enrollment. I don't know if anything else will come up that will require that meeting on the, the twenty-sixth, I believe it is. So you may choose to cancel that at some, if there's nothing that, uh, urgent that needs a special meeting. And then the next regular meeting would be the second one we will do, which is the eighth.
Okay, stay tuned. Okay, that takes us to, uh, executive session. So I would be looking for a motion to go into executive session, subject to state statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this would be relative to the twenty-twenty, twenty-one support staff compensation and the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two superintendent contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Rick, seconded by Diamond. Uh, we will call, go back, start, go to guests, go to Brian.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
And Rick.
Yes.
And Diamond.
Yes.
Shelley. And Dave. Yes. As yes, seven whole, we are in executive session. We are planning to come back to open if there's any action appropriate and determine from there. This is actually the group log. Yes, if the procedure errors, you're going to get out of this and join the executive.
[laughing].
Are we going to need Chris? Yes. Okay. Chris and Karen, brother. Sure, you probably will, uh, just a minute. Let's get, uh, Mr. Holdman to...
Do I X out of this meeting?
Um, yes.